Good afternoon. I'd like to reconvene our Board of County Commissioners meeting from this morning. We'll deviate a little bit. I know we're just reconvening, not starting a new meeting. But I would like to ask Larry Harvey to do another invocation and I'll lead us in the prayer. Excuse me, in the pledge, if everybody will please stand.
Let us bow our heads. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for these young men that are present with us today and the hard work that they've done. We thank you for the parents and the coaches who dedicated to pour their life into people and to invest in young people. And Father, we just thank you for this meeting. We ask that you give us wisdom and deliverance that we can discuss and deliberate, Father. And Lord, we are so thankful this Thanksgiving season for all the things you've done for us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Harvey, and I would like to welcome the tenant under Palaca football team and their parents, and congratulations on such a great year.[106.42][106.42][applause] Okay, our first item is public hearing, planning and development. So Gabriel, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is ordinance number 2021-034, an ordinance of the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners, adopting an amendment to the text of the future land use element, transportation element, housing element, infrastructure element, conservation element, recreation and open space element, intergovernmental coordination element, capital improvement element, economic development element, adopting a water supply facilities work plan, and amending the future land use map by area, removing agriculture to land use designation and incorporating those parcels within unincorporated Putnam County to agriculture land use, providing for correction of Scrivener's errors, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Chairman, staff has made the two changes that staff was directed to make at the previous workshop, and I trust that the commission has received a copy of the edited and changes accepted version of the comprehensive plan. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Any questions from the commission? No. Okay. All right, seeing none, I'd like to open up the public comment portion of this meeting. If you would come to the podium and introduce yourself, your name and address, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes. We won't cut you off right at three minutes, which three minutes is around what you'll give you. So anyway, first speaker is Mr. Craig Sharar.
Craig Sharar, 147 Pine Tree Road, East Palaca, Florida. I almost, I really do wish Mr. Turner was here because 15 years ago, when we were arguing about these things, and he was on the planning board, and I was speaking against all of the increases in density, and what happened? Remember Mariposa? Nobody remembers Mariposa? Well, where is Mariposa? It was, oh, if we change the zoning and change the density, we're going to have a brand-new city in Cracker Swamp. Wrong. River Bend, 1,500 houses at my back door, because I just moved away from Miami to be in rural agricultural Putnam County. 1,500 houses. Where are they? They're not there. Back in those, in the 2004 to the 2008 period, everybody that came here wanted a zoning change, wanted a density change, they got it. And how many more houses have been built? Your planning department should tell you that in 2004 to 2008, we created all these subdivisions, created all this density, and this is how many? Wrong. Changing color on the map and changing density doesn't do anything. I laugh every time I see Mr. Suter's name, because I really want to thank him for the Popeyes and the Taco Bell and the gas station, and that's it. That's where we are. People are moving here because people want to live in a rural setting. They don't want to live in a non-rural area. Do you know how many vacant lots there are in the city of Palatka? Do you know how many vacant lots there are in the city of Palatka?
Mr. Chairman, if I...
Yeah?
If I may, I don't. I don't work for the city of Palatka, though.
You're right, but those city, those vacant lots are part of the inventory of the county.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Craig, if you could just address us.
Okay. Those vacant lots are part of the inventory of available places to build, and most of those lots, or a lot of those lots, already have infrastructure, and they're vacant. And they don't take that in consideration, because this is a planner. Oh, we're going to change the density and the people are going to come here. No, that doesn't do it. People come here because they want it to be the way that it is. Mr. Suter says, oh, we need more taxpayers. Okay, what do you need? Do you need one person that's making $100,000 a year or five people making $20,000 a year? The biggest impact that this county is having right now, y'all know what it is? Bash World? You hear about Bash World? How was he able to collect those thousands of acres? Because they were available as agriculture. They're down there changing the zoning, right? They abandoned their PUDs. There were PUDs out there for development, and what they're doing, they're going and abandoning them to keep them as agriculture. Don't vote this in. We don't need this density. We need ourselves to be our nice rural community where people want to come because they want to be rural. There are plenty of places that people want to be urban, and you can't compete with Jacksonville Urban, St. Augustine Urban, Daytona Urban, the Land Urban. We need to keep our rural character.
Thank you, Mr. Sharar. Jim?
Excuse me. Craig? I was going to answer your question. The Department of Community Affairs, they killed Mariposa, and River Bend was viable that I know of, up until about a year and a half or two years ago, at least then it was. I don't know. But somebody came in and bought a piece of that PUD, and it was sold off. So I don't, I think the county's abandoned it, maybe not, but just to answer your question, that got killed by the recession in 2009 and '10. That's what killed River Bend. They were...
That's not what killed River Bend. What killed River Bend is this. You can go on a map, and we prove it. There are, in one section of Interlock and Lakes Estates, there's 12 square miles. That's two miles wide and six miles long. And somebody sitting in these chairs when they were over at the courthouse said, ooh, let's chop them up into little itty-bitty pieces. Houdal Ridge, chop them up into little itty-bitty pieces. Well, guess what? The reason why nobody moved into those? Because that wasn't what people are looking for. People don't want to live out in the middle of nowhere on a quarter acre lot. If your analysis was correct, which was the recession killed River Bend, then why isn't anybody building that now?
So we talked, we actually looked at taking over the developments. We talked to the people that held the PUD. I can't remember if they're in South or North Carolina, but they, their backs were up against the wall. They put the deal together, they got the land dedicated.
No, you know what? This is what happened. And none of you guys were here, but what happened was this. That project, and I know all about River Bend, because I sued it, and I hope part of what I did stopped it from going through, is when you're in an urban environment and you're going to have a development like that, what you require is a developer to put up a bond equal to the amount of the entire cost of the infrastructure, and then they get to go in and build. What we did was, the county assumed responsibility for putting in the water and sewer, and after a certain number of houses were sold, then the developer would be able to do it. So they had a free lunch up to about, I think it was 40% of the houses. So they couldn't even make that viable. And besides that, they were never a developer. They were flippers. That's what it was that they were going to do, because if they were really going to develop, they would have come back in there and they would be developing it now. But they aren't.
So if you heard earlier when we were discussing at the workshop, what I'm in favor of seeing is the county forcing all developers to put in all their infrastructure, their roads, their sidewalks, their water, the sewer, and anything else. I think that the taxpayers could help them out by setting up CDDs. But by no stretch of imagination do I want to pay for someone else's developments or their roads or anything else that they're doing. If a developer's going to come in here, they should be held accountable for that, whether it's through bonding or for leveraging.
It's true, but the problem with the CDDs, if you look at Rivertown, I mean Rivertown is viable now, but if you go back and look at Rivertown...
Yeah, it got caught right in the middle of that.
Okay. Well, Rivertown basically couldn't sell anything in '06, because what happens is this, the CDD puts all the cost of development on the property owner. And what happens is, the people buy the properties and they say, well, what is it going to cost me? And they look at their tax bill, the CDC's not on there. Those people in Rivertown were paying four and five times as much on their CDCs than what they were paying on their property taxes. And then the other thing is, is that when they set up a CDC district, it then become, it's kind of like a super homeowners association. Well, they don't maintain the drainage out there, because a friend of mine was actually on the board out there on one of the CDCs, and the contractor did such crappy work, and there wasn't a performance bond put up, that the culverts were collapsing and they were...
You come from South Florida, and that's required down there, where they make HOAs maintain their drainage. So I think that can be addressed in the land development code easily. And by the way, I'm going to vote against this, but for different reasons.
Well, and I appreciate that, but the thing is this, we are doing nothing to eliminate Interlock and Lakes Estates.
You're not going to.
Huh?
You're not going to eliminate L.A.
Well, you know what you do? You tell the developer, you want to sit, you want to build, you want to increase density? You don't give them the density automatically. You set up a mechanism that they can buy density by buying a lot out in Interlock and Lakes Estates, give them to Mr. Woodward's buddies at the Putnam Land Conservancy, and start turning those quarter acre lots from private lands into public lands, because right now, they're nothing but a burden, because you've got to go out there and maintain the roads.
I agree. Okay.
If you had TRD, Transferable Development Rights, which we actually talked about when I was coming up here in '08, right, Mike? We were talking about doing transferable development.
Okay, let's go, let's go ahead and wrap this part up. Okay?
So, but you know, that's, you know what? That's what planning is. Planning isn't, like I say, chopping up property, making things more dense. Planning is, we've got a problem over here, it's called Interlock and Lakes Estates. We have a problem over here, it's called Houdal Ridge. We have a problem over here, it's called Whispering Mines. What do you do to take care of that problem? These guys want increased density? Fine, buy up the stuff that represents a burden to us and transfer it. But it's just too easy, go Interlock and Lakes Estates again.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Adamsak.
Yeah, I just wanted to say two things. I can, the first time Quint Suter's name came to my mind in reference to this conversation was just now, so that's the first thing. So all the time that I put in thinking about this and reading about it, not once was I influenced by anything like that. The second thing is, if you look at the inventory of housing and lots and everything else in Putnam County right now, had some of those things actually worked out, we wouldn't be in this situation now where people are paying 100 and some thousand dollars for lots out in far west Putnam that they, you could have bought for 10 grand three years ago, literally. So we need to increase some inventory, and just because something's vacant doesn't mean it's available. There's a difference between the two. You can have all the vacant land you want in the world, and if it's not for sale on the common market, it's not really available. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Mr. Michael Woodward.
This feels like déjà vu.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I have three points I'd like to make this evening. Oh, name and address, sorry. Michael Woodward, 517 South Francis Street, Interlock. At your workshop on the eighth of this month, one or two of you seem to me to be justifying the doubling of density in rural and agricultural areas by saying, we need growth. However, there's no evidence that I'm aware of, no data, none, indicating that the existing residential density limits in rural and agricultural areas are limiting Putnam County's population growth. So, point number one, the density issue is not about whether the county should or will have population growth. It is about where that growth will be and whether it will be fiscally sustainable when it comes. Will the growth be in rural and agricultural areas where the taxes that residential properties pay do not even come close to covering the higher costs of projecting public services out to those areas? Where the rest of the taxpayers will be forced to subsidize those costs? Or will the growth be in the county's municipalities and urban service areas where public services can be provided efficiently and cost-effectively? Two-mile round trips by ambulances, fire trucks, patrol cars, garbage trucks, and school buses cost a lot less than 20-mile round trips. Which do we want more of? Which brings me to point two. I have no problem with increasing the density in urban service areas. DEO has no problem with it. The problem is with increasing residential density in the agricultural and rural areas only. And point three, Mr. Quintus deserves a lot of credit for his efforts to include language that attempts to blunt some of the urban sprawl effects that will be caused by density increases in the ag and rural areas. However, there is a simpler and more effective solution to that problem. Leave the ag 1, ag 2, and rural residential densities just where they are under the existing current comprehensive plan, and use density exceptions to take care of the kind of single lot and family situations that we were all talking about at the workshop on the eighth. Thank you for your consideration. Be happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward.
Okay, I got, let me ask some questions. All right, so, right now, you're, I guess I'm a little confused. You said, are you for or against increase in density in the urban service areas?
I think increasing the density in the urban service areas is a great idea, because we want to provide plenty of opportunity for population growth, residential development in areas where the services can be provided cost-effectively. And during all of the discussion before the planning commission and before this board, the only evidence that I ever heard of any need for increased density anywhere was evidence that, anecdotal evidence, that some developers who might otherwise have considered putting residential development into our urban service areas were not going to do so because the density was not, was not great enough. So I think, I think increasing the density in urban service areas is the right thing to do. That's where we want to direct as much of the future growth as possible.
I'd ask a question at that meeting. I don't know if you're prepared to answer it now. How many acres we have there, or how many parcels are ag 2 versus ag 1?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I don't have the answer to that. The difficulty here is that we've been having some GIS issues lately, and it's just been difficult to query any kind of data on the GIS system right now. But I can, once the GIS system is fully operational, I can provide you with that answer.
I guess the question goes to, we're about 800 square miles. We have people living in almost everywhere of the 800 square miles, some on large parcels of land, some on smaller. What I would like to do is see what the actual impact is, if you take away the ag 2 and go to ag 1 only. I'm not sure if the impact is going to be as dire as you, as you make it out to be. But I guess I was confused, because when you, you said your first point was density, I'm sorry, I can't read my own handwriting, you said density is not about population growth. And then you were bringing up the question, questionability about fiscal sustainability, and then you said rural area, rural service area. So I think we're clear there that in the rural service areas, you don't have an issue with the 24 units per acre?
I have no issue with the 24 units per acre in the urban service areas, never have had an issue with that. To your earlier question, I can't give you the number of lots or the acreage, but I can tell you that the percentage of the unincorporated area of this county that is in ag 2 is about 48%. It's pretty nearly half. The percentage that's in ag 1 is about 11%. The percentage that's in rural residential is about 6.
Of the 48%, how much is wetlands? How much is government-owned? How much is not buildable? Have you looked at that by any chance?
I do not have that information.
Because I, I would have to imagine a large portion of that would be owned by the federal government, the state, and Putnam County itself. Because I, you know, for me to be able to get to a concern, if somebody walked in and said, look, you've got a quarter of a million acres of ag 2, and by doubling the density, you could put blank more houses on here, and that's what, the number I'm trying to get to, see what the actual impact is. But if you're saying we have a larger bag 2 in the East Palac area, where we do have some urban service area there, you have some rural areas as well, I don't think it would be that great of an impact if you took 20 acres and put two homes on it instead of one. If you went out to a place like Floor Home, where it gets a little more sparse, or I'd like to say Johnson, but I don't think Johnson's that sparse anymore. So I just, I can't wrap my head around the fact that if somebody has 75 acres and they want to put two houses on it, that they should be restricted and not be allowed to without having to go through a PUD or subdivision.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Woodward.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the revision of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan as presented today.
Okay, we've got a motion. We have a second?
I'll second for your conversation.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Adamsak for discussion. Commissioner Adamsak?
You know, all along, I've kind of had the conversation. I don't necessarily like every way that we got here, like I do with several other topics that we talked about. I don't necessarily not like the end product, so I'll probably be a yes vote, I just want to hear from the rest of the commissioners. But I do want to say something. When I moved here, I track, economics is kind of my background, so I track like housing availability and stuff out of my own personal interests, because it's something that's interesting about areas. See, I got three different agencies that send me what's available in Putnam County via email, you know, and when I first moved here, I would get 20 to 30 listings a day, and now I'm lucky if I get three to five a week. If we don't do something to expand the housing inventory in the county, people like the folks that have these young kids here today that, that want to have affordable housing and have stuff available to them for their kids and for my kids' future in the county, it won't be there. And does that mean that we shouldn't necessarily, when we do land use, have some more governing things over some of the types of housing and things like that? Definitely, that's something that's coming next. But as far as the density stuff, that seems to be the biggest catching point from those who have spoken to us, not, not just the two of you. I understand your argument to a point, but we just have, we have a need for housing and we have a need for development, and I don't want just wide-open development, and I think this allows us to curtail that, just like Commissioner Rawls said, you know, two lot, two houses on 75 acres or 20 acres, I don't think is how I see urban sprawl. And I fully understand the idea of services out to a remote location where a house is built. I get it. But the house is already out there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Adamsak. Commissioner Rawls?
I'm, I'll be voting against this for the same reason I've said it before. I think that in a rush to try to get something done, we made a mistake and hired the wrong consultant. I think that we should put this back on the street, take a look at, at current data since we did not, our plan is not based on anything that's current. It's all, all data or anecdotal data. And when I brought some stuff up, I was, I was told, that's anecdotal. Therefore, you know, we shouldn't consider it. But I think that we should consider throwing this thing out and starting from scratch. It's a 15-year document, and I, you know, we've, we've already wasted the money on Kimbley Horn and got where we are. So let's slow it down, get it right, send it to DEO as a, as a different product. We're already late to the dance anyway, so it's not going to hurt to do it again.
Okay. Commissioner Adamsak?
I, my only apprehension to that is, I don't know that we have valid data available to us, to be honest with you. I don't know.
That what?
I don't think there's valid data out there. I don't think, I don't think that the census is accurate for Putnam County. I don't. I absolutely don't believe it is. I think there's zero chance that it is. So I don't know if we hired another consultant that we can get. We might get some fresher data as far as businesses and things like that, but I don't think we're going to get much better data from the actual numbers that matter. From the presentation, the people are looking at our county to do stuff, I think we can improve that. But I think we could also, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we can update that after the fact as well.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Harvey, any other comment?
I'm waiting, because he's waving his hand, so I want to hear what he has to say before I continue.
Commissioner Adams, everything you say is completely correct. And you know, when you look at the amendments to the comp plan, and I respect where Commissioner Rawls is coming from, a lot of that has to do with, is the plan before you today better than the one that exists? I mean, when you talk about going back to start over, it, I look at the comp plan in many ways like you look at a constitution. It's a living, breathing document that kind of moves with the needs of the county, understanding that that's its function. You know, over the next year, five years, 10 years, or 15 years, there's nothing that would preclude this commission, or you can delegate it to ZBOA or Planning Commission. There's nothing that would preclude further amendments, just, but when you're looking today at what you're, what you're contemplating passing, is it better than what's there? And what's there is so outdated, and it's not just Kimbley Horn. Staff has put a phenomenal amount of time into bringing this document as current with kind of what the skills and abilities are today. So I just hope that we take that into consideration as part of the vote.
Yeah, and I think that's where I was going, is, I don't know that if we hired another consultant or we restarted, that the product would be much different than what we have. We just have some different supporting data that still I don't believe would be accurate. Unless you had a professional here that had their finger on the pulse for this particular county all the time, I don't think that's going to happen. And I don't think there's a consultant that has that in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rawls?
So the, the reason I say we, we need to start over is, the, the data that was used was when Putnam County was still in the throes of a recession. You know, a lot of that was inaccurate to begin with. Is it really our intention to persuade the locals college to pursue master's degree-level programs? Is that one, you know, part of, that's what, part of our economic development plan, if you read the economic development element? And yet, we've sat here and listened to folks talk about how we need to be pushing for vocational training in Putnam County, but that's not mentioned at all. This is the kind of stuff that I'm talking about. There's, there's really not been a, a great effort put forward to produce a document that reflects Putnam County as we are now and as we should be in the next 15 years. But this is the plan that we're going to put out there for the next 15 years. And whether this commission as it sits now, or a commission two years from now, or 10 years from now, takes it up and decides to read it, and it's not a very exciting read, to be honest with you. There's just not a great chance they're going to do that. You know, that, we went way past our, I don't, is it a hard deadline? Do you have to read? So, you know, we're supposed to redo these things every now and then. We didn't. But we missed it. We missed the deadline if it's supposed to be done every decade. So we have an opportunity to hit, to... So, we have an opportunity to hit, to pump the brakes a little bit. Make what's in the plan reflect what's actually in the community now. But paying somebody $40,000 to go take an old document, dust it, dust it off and put that information in and say, "This is what we're basing our plan on." And you're not, you're not going to experience any growth. You know, 0.3% growth is what we're looking at. Some of the questions that were raised by Mr. Sharar could be found in that data if we had it. How many vacant lots are there? I don't know, I can't answer that question in the city of Placa. I'll tell you, there's about 4,200 houses. And I can tell you that about 10 years ago, 50% of them were over 50 years old. I can't tell you where that is nowadays, but if we had that data, I could tell you. But we don't have that. And maybe we never produce it. Maybe developers take a look at Putnam County and say, "This is, you know, you know, based on, on what I'm seeing here, it's not a, not very attractive for development." Or maybe they come in here with a lot of questions, as some of them have. But if we don't have the answers, I'll ask you a simple question. How many businesses do you think we have in Putnam County right now, just in the unincorporated areas, not the cities?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Exactly. So, we don't have this information. It sure would be useful to have. And I'm not trying to, trying to sing you out, pick on you, but I'm just saying that this, this is the kind of information that could be in our, in our comp plan or that maybe we use to develop a comp plan. You know, one of the questions I asked recently was, how many gallons of affluent do we currently have in the ground and subthings? We have it sitting right at the health department. You know, so, I, I'm a no vote.
Okay, alright, thank you, Commissioner Rawls, okay.
Call a question.
All in favor and indicate by saying aye.
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 Pose sign.
Aye.
Aye, okay, ayes have it. Can we move that forward? Alright, the next item, Julianne, the public hearing from administration on the budget amendment.
Thank you, Chairman. Today's budget amendment is for prior fiscal year and has no impact on the current fiscal year and is done for compliance purposes. Of the $12 million budget amendment, it has been advertised as required in the Placa Daily News on November 19th, 2021. Of that 12 million, 11.9 is due to the county receiving and dispersing CARES Act funding. The remaining 150 is an increase to our internal service fleet maintenance fund.
Okay, any questions, Julianne? At all? Okay, I'd like to open up the public comment portion of this, this particular item. Anybody wishing to speak for or against this budget amendment? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the budget resolution for 2021, approving the increase of 12 million, 051774.
Second.
Okay, got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey and a proper second by Commissioner Rawls to approve, to move it forward. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, before we move to the special part of this program, I'd just like to recognize Susan Roberts for all of her work. Yes, all of her work and the Planning Commission, they put in a tremendous amount of hours. And some of them, when they agreed to be on the Planning Commission, didn't know they were going to have to be reviewing a comp plan and other things a couple of times, so. And it's a volunteer board and so truly we appreciate all your work and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. I'm Susan Roberts, Chair of the Planning Commission, 448 Huntington Shortcut Road, Lake Como. Again, I want to thank you for not only giving us that auspicious responsibility to, to bring this document out of the dungeon and into the light, which we tried to do. And I, I don't want to make excuses for it. And I also don't want to give you the impression that I think what we did was perfect. I think what we did was the best we could with what we had. We were caught in two different major conundrum as far as the time goes. Number one, we got caught in the middle of COVID. I mean, we were just ramping this thing up off the ground and boom, we got hit by COVID. We got shut down, we got put into Zoom meetings, we were doing Zoom public comments. It was just, you know, it was tough, but we did it. The Planning Commission, two a person, worked extremely hard on this document. The second thing we got caught in, and I think it bears noting for the future, when you go out to start one of these things, please don't start it on the cusp of a decennial census because you're going to get caught at the tail end of estimates for the prior 10 years. You're going to get caught during the collection period for the current time and heaven forbid you get caught in a period of pandemic where people aren't going to let enumerators in their houses to do their census data and we wind up with grossly undercounted population. So, that's going to level out a little bit as time progresses. And I assure you that if you all give us the charge to take one of these elements or two of these elements a year and review them, we're going to do that. And I have said before that I would be more than willing to work on data analysis. But the data we have right now is based on that faulty census data that came about in 2020. So give us a few years to get some adjustments made in that data. When census comes back and says, "Oh, wait a minute, things are happening down there." And we see some of these developments coming online. And we see that some of the housing data that we were beginning to see anecdotally toward the end of the project, really hitting the books and taking hold. We're going to be able to give you revisions to this document. The worst thing that Putnam County could do would be to say, "Okay, y'all passed it. It's on the shelf, we're not touching it for 15 years." Please don't let us do that. Regardless of where I am, either on the Planning Commission chair, whatever, or just a citizen of Lake Como, I would not want to see that happen and I would fight to see it move forward. I respect you, I thank you, and I would be very remiss if I didn't give extreme gratitude to Planning and Development Services staff. Y'all, we gave them a document that came to you in rough draft format. But that rascal had to be proofread and had to be edited to make sure we didn't really have a lot of double sentences in there. And they're the ones that did it. Gabriel and his staff and John have done yeoman's work. And I greatly appreciate all that they do and continue to do because it's really wonderful to work with a staff that brings that much competence to the page. So thank you, have a great Thanksgiving and I really appreciate all that you do for Putnam County.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to you and your board and I, I agree with you 100%. If, if we don't revisit this, and I love the idea that you said, "Take it in little, little pieces at a time." If we don't do that, we're failing this community as a board, in my opinion. So, I, I hope we do that and I hope we start doing that as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Gabriel, all the staff, John, for what y'all did and what you do, so. Okay, next, recognition of the Tennen Under Football Team. Commissioner Harvey? Julianne, are you going up?
We're going to, we're going to call your name and if you would, come up, please.
Jacob Miller, number 30. Jaquan Jackson, number 29. Luke Griffiths, number 23. Bryce Green. Bodie Green. Timothy Giggan. We're missing a few who aren't feeling well. Jaden Esol. Steve Davis. Ryan Robbins. Jaden Peoples. Jackson Young. Grady Yeomans. Angel Torres. Preston Smith. Clayton Shivers. Nope, okay. Jarrett Curry. We have assistant coach, Donnie Esol. And head coach, Brandon Teal.
Alright, you ready? Come on, tighten up. Hey guys, don't hit each other.
Things never.
Everybody pay attention to the camera.
Everybody stare at one camera.
Act like you're thankful for something. Did we get them all?
Let Sarah get hers, yeah. You got it?
Wait, the newspaper's got to get theirs. Smile, look at Sarah, lady in the black top, okay? There we go. Congratulations. Now guys, there's going to be cake in the back room back there. I know, Ms. Julianne, got you. Thank you. Thank you, Coach. Thank you for your dedication to that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe that's all the items that we have, so, any other comments from the commission? Okay, we stand adjourned.